I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott.
We'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott.
Here.
Councilmember Warren White.
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Thank you. We have any comments or questions tonight?
No.
Hearing and seeing none, it's the time I always ask people, I'm the worst one. Please put your phone on silent or vibrate, and we'll move on to item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of October 7th, 2025, which will be published on October 22nd, 2025.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion about our meeting of October the 7th? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 3A.
Kelly Cantu to discuss Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as well as services offered by Shea Hope.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here. Yes, my name is Kelly Cantu, and I work for Shea Hope. For those of you who don't know, we are the domestic violence agency that services St. Martin, St. Mary, Iberia, and assumption parishes. Just a little bit about what we do. We offer protective order services. So if someone is in an intimate partner relationship, and they need a restraining order, they come to us. We help them with a temporary restraining order, and we walk them through the process. We also, though, a lot of people don't know this, but we also help those individuals who may be a parent having issues with their adult children, vice versa, and also grandparents who may be having issues with their adult grandchildren, vice versa. We can also do restraining orders for them as well. We do civil restraining orders, so we're able to type that up for them. We go to court with them. We're not lawyers, but we can kind of help walk them through the process. We also have two shelters, one here in New Iberia, and one in Franklin. And those of you who have bags in front of you, I've provided you a little 2024 recap of the services that we've provided across our four parishes. So real quick, we've helped over 2,000 people. We did over 700 restraining orders. We've answered over 4,000 crisis calls, and we've housed over 400 people. In your packets, while we're looking at those, you will also see a couple other things. Here in New Iberia, we will be having a family-friendly event this Thursday, the 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Bank Park, down Bank Avenue. It's going to be a family-friendly style event. I believe there's going to be fun jumps, some type of gaming thing. I don't know. Something where kids can go play games. Food, I'm assuming some music, entertainment, and a gathering of hope. This is for anyone who would like to attend. Children are encouraged to come. There should be some activities too for them as well. Also in your packets, you will see that today's Tuesday? Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 22nd is Wear Orange Day. This is for Unity Day for Bully Awareness Month. Bullying and domestic violence do kind of go hand in hand. You know, if our kids aren't treating each other right, you know, it'll typically trickle into their adult relationships. So part of Shea Hope is going into the schools, talking to the young kids about love, respect, kindness, and we are displaying that by wearing orange tomorrow. I also provided you guys an orange ribbon in your bag, so you can wear that tomorrow, take a picture, and tag us on Facebook or Instagram. If anyone in the audience would like an orange ribbon, you also can just let me know before I leave, and I'll provide you one. And you are also invited to this event. So why is this important? Domestic violence affects one in three women, one in four men, one in 10 teens, affecting over 15.5 million children who witness domestic violence every year, just here in the United States. So that is a large number of people. Louisiana ranks fifth in the nation for women who are killed by men that they know. So as you can see, this is something that is prevalent. We need to raise awareness. We need to come together as a community and try to break the silence on domestic violence, which is why I'm here to ask you guys to sign a proclamation and take a cute picture with me for social media, so that the people of New Iberia can see that you guys are standing up against domestic violence. And you also in your packets have our information, a little breakdown of restraining orders, a little info on Shea Hope. You have my business card. If you ever have any questions, it's the rectangle one. You can contact me directly. And our square card is our safety card. So if you know anyone who might need help, they can call that 828 number, and we can help them out. That's it. Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
What schools do y'all go into?
We go to any school that asks us to come into it. So I'm more in the St. Martin office, so I can't speak too much on what's been going on this year. But I do know our child advocate has been going to Magnolia recently. Bell Place, that's in this parish, right? They just reached out to me, so working on that schedule. And tomorrow, we'll be at the Boys and Girls Club after hours. So it's kind of, we've done Park Elementary before. Oh, man, we've gone to a few. I have the brain. I'm in two parishes, so it's kind of like.
The reason I was asking, because I'm in the buddies program.
Okay.
And Mr. Stanley Small runs that. And he's over at the Juvenile Department for Iberia, St. Martin, and St. Mary Parish.
You got my call.
We've been doing that for 20 years. So now we're into high school. We should just deal with elementary and junior high. So it's all over, St. Martin, St. Mary, and everything. So that might be something that, and I heard the Omegas also, they just developed a buddies program to go into schools too.
Yeah.
And that's how we deal with just behavior kids, and a lot of them are going through some of those same things you're talking about.
Yeah, we also do programs on teen dating violence as well for our older kids. So we do, you know, for the little ones, kindness, all the way up to about sixth, seventh grade. Then, once we hit that eighth grade, ninth grade, and on up, we're focusing more on dating relationships, making sure we're seeing the red flags and all that kind of stuff. So yeah, give us a call. Shoot me a little email. I love to schedule stuff and participate.
Thank you.
You know what? I hope that before you get into where they can harm somebody or get theirself in trouble, that you can just walk away instead of, you know.
And that's the hardest thing, you know. Statistically, it takes someone who is in a domestic violence situation seven times to leave. So that is, you know, the statistical rate, at least seven times. And, you know, I've been in this field for seven years, and I see it all the time. We have a lot of people who come to us, and they go back, then they come to us. And we don't, we don't turn people away if they come multiple times. We, you know, because we do know it takes time for them to come back. So they're always welcome to come back to us and ask questions and, you know, get the help that they need, so.
So take me through a proper protocol if we are made, if we're made aware of a domestic violence incident as elected official, we get a call. What would be the proper protocol beside calling you moving forward to get these people help? Just a phone call to you or a text to you?
Call the 828 number. So that's our 24-hour crisis line. It dispatches to our main office. But if it's during like 8:00 to 4:00, they'll be dispatched to kind of like whatever parish they're in. But if it's after hours, if they are in imminent danger and need to get out and go to our shelter, we do have an advocate on call who's like, we have an advocate on call 24/7. So if they're in imminent danger and need to get out, we partner up with law enforcement. We go get them from their residence and bring them to whichever shelter they kind of, you know, if they're in New Iberia, they're going to go hopefully to New Iberia, so. But the 828 number is the number that they would need to call. Or the Louisiana State Hotline number. If they're not in our four parishes, they can always call like the Louisiana State Hotline number for domestic violence, and that will dispatch them to whatever parish, because everything's kind of sectioned off. So like Faith House has like seven parishes. We have four, then there's like Iris and, oh my gosh, I just saw it on Facebook. There's, you know, every area has kind of their own agency. But yeah, 828 or the state hotline number.
Okay. Okay, we taking a pic?
Yes. Let's do it. Any other questions?
Any volunteers that take a pic first?
Have a real proclamation.
Oh, okay.
You gotta smile, Warren.
I love it when y'all come prepared and come in all pretty.
See, you're all pretty.
I love it. I love it. Thank you so much. Yeah, let's hold it.
You want to hold it?
Yeah. Look, you just get aside. It's perfect.
All right.
Let's act like we love each other.
Sit there.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. And if y'all ever need, give me a call.
Same thing. You can see enough, that's a job.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, 4A.
Ordmen number 23528, and ordmen amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
First one, Councilman David Merrill, and second, Councilman Warren White. Is there anyone here from the audience to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Now I'm looking for a main motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and Councilman Warren White. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Am I good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, 5A.
Resolution number 25125, a resolution appointing Wayne Decody to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board for the remainder of a four-year term, which terminates on June 30th, 2029.
And as per our policies here tonight, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, and second by Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas. Any discussion, any comments, question?
I just want to thank Mr. Wayne for volunteering to do this again. He's already on the board.
I know that. And does a good job.
We always appreciate those that step up to the task. Thank you.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. You get four more years for a no-paying job. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. No, it is. I mean, you know. It's a.
Move with double the pay, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, your pay's doubled. It's just good to have people step up. Thank you for what you do. It's important.
Absolutely.
5B.
Resolution number 25126, a resolution appointing Jules B. Schweng the Second to the Squirrel Run Levy and Drainage District Board for the remainder of a four-year term, which terminates on June 30th, 2029.
Okay, he is not, yeah, he's right there. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilman Brooke Markcott. Nobody calls you that. I'm sorry I peeped on you.
It's all, it's all legal here.
That's your two. Any questions or comments?
Thank you to you two for volunteering your time. He's new to the board, taking Mr. Richard's spot. So we appreciate you stepping up. Sorry, there's no pay.
No problem. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And no other questions or comments? Please vote your machines. Thank you, sir. All approved with your government name. Thank you. All right, now I'll move on to 5C.
Resolution number 25127, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the American Rescue Plan Act Major Drainage Cleanout Project, Area D, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Councilman Troy Como and Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this one?
Yeah, just, why don't you tell the public how much we spent on drainage this year?
We spent $1 million on four different sections, but it cleaned every canal in the city. Now, we can only go up to the city line, but it cleaned, it cleaned every canal in the city, and some of them that we knew existed, but we haven't cleaned for a very, very long time. So this was good. This kind of finalizes it. We have, it's been $1 million. That was ARPA funds. As you know, we have a half million in cash for drainage coming from capital outlay. We have $4 million coming next year. So this is great that we got this done, because everything else, which is why we did this first, everything else feeds these canals. So with the millions of dollars of work that are coming, well, it's important that you get the main arteries cleaned first, so that it has somewhere to drain. So that's kind of what we did, and we will continue to do drainage work from here on out. Any other questions, Council? Yes, sir.
So with the process of cleaning the drainages out, the ditches and stuff like that, this is removal of debris and trees?
We remove trees. We remove debris. We remove sediment. We shot shots and made sure it drained. So we did work, grade work as well, to make sure that, you know, it's not just a visible show of, what you see some people do is just clean the banks and say they cleaned the canal. That's not what we did. And this, in many instances, they were reshaped to form a proper contour to make sure that we had drainage.
Now, do we do any maintenance-type stuff, like the trees going into the bank, treating that?
We have a sidewinder. We cut them. Now that these canals, all the ones that we can, there are a few of them that are too big. There are a few of them that the city does not have the equipment. But thank goodness, we have a continued stream of drainage money. And so now we have a cognizant fact, you know, it's on our minds, that we're going to have to keep this up. We didn't spend $1 million to not do maintenance along the way.
That's wise.
So we are looking at a maintenance plan. That is something that, I'm waiting to make sure that when we get the half a million dollars, which is coming soon, that will do engineering for the future projects. But wrapped in the future projects is some maintenance. The other thing, I'm just being a little cautious. The, we're almost through the court permit process. We're almost ready to go with the detention pond finally. There's one more little holdup, that they have to do an archaeological study that's going to take a couple of months. That's my last new roadblock that came up, but it's coming. Well, as soon as they say you have the money, you're ready to spend, then that frees up $3 million. When we do that, I'm going to come back to you for a maintenance contract on the bigger canals and stuff that we can't do on our own.
Of course.
You didn't pay to do all of this, and, you know, Ricky would tell you, you've got to clean. You know, you can't, it's something that requires, as you were saying, you know, complete maintenance.
On a maintenance project, you're going to be looking at outside people, contractors?
Probably, because we can't handle.
You need some special skill sets.
You know, you need some special skill set. It needs to be people that do that. They have to have the proper equipment. That's something our engineer will, just like we did this, we will handle it the same way we just spent $1 million.
Right.
It won't be $1 million.
Right.
But we'll handle it in the same way that our engineer will take bids, and that way I know we have, you know.
We're going to try to look at maybe a year contract each time.
I hadn't really probably, I mean, I hadn't really decided yet.
And we can see if we just, you know, if we like what they're doing or not, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Everybody good? And please vote your machines. 5B.
Resolution number 25128, a resolution approving change order number two for the Pepperflex Access Road Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Troy Como, second by Councilman Warren White. Any questions or comments? Everybody good?
We know, we know what we getting here.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
This is just making sure our kids and our parents are safe when they exit and enter the ballpark. I think it's a great, great investment, and this is just good government at work.
Well, it is, and for the amount of money we've spent, have spent already, and the amount that's coming, we have $3 million in our capital outlay. That's about ready to start. That should be bid out in the next, that's from last year's capital outlay. That should be bid out in the next couple of months. So you think we need the exit road now, we're really going to need it, so it's a good thing. Well, if there's nothing further, please vote your machines.
Dreams come true.
Yeah.
Some dreams.
Not at a very fast rate, but.
Not without hard work, though. 20 years.
20 years, and a lot of hard work from a lot of people. Just thinking of people that kept that going with no money. That's what I think of. It was easy. I had to find the money. But after you find the money, you know, you can make it happen, but people kept that going on.
Many may say yes.
We always going to have that.
More than volunteers.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah. 5V, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 25129, a resolution approving certificate of substantial completion for the Pollard Street Sewer Replacement Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas.
Second.
And Councilman David Merrill, got that one. Any discussion on Polley Street? Glad to see that this is done.
So.
Yes, sir.
We, I saw, reading through my agenda, that the engineer in the firm did a stamp of approval, approved the project. And so do we have, you know, warranty on it moving forward if something should happen?
Yes, yes. Every contractor has to warranty their work, so we do have that.
I know they did a lot of old and new replacement and a lot of.
A lot. And the good thing is, they did it, and then the whole thing was cambered, because once we cover it, you know, it's ours. The really good part, it's all backfilled with concrete. So because it's backfilled with concrete, you're not going to have any shifting of those joints. You're not going to have anything move, because, you know, that was the ultimate. The other good news, and I can't tell you exactly when, but soon, now that we approve this, well, then the road crew can set up to go and put the new road in, because, you know, our citizens on Polley Street are living in the country. They have limestone and dust, and it's not good. The end product's going to be great, but it is really torn up. I mean, it was a major project, but glad to see this done, so. Any further questions or comments? Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Clear, clear, clear the deck. Please vote. Thank you. 5V.
Resolution number 25130, a resolution accepting Act 461 of the 2025 RLS appropriation relative to the Bayou Tesh Museum and designating Jane Bro to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to this project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas, and a second by Councilman Warren White. This money is part of capital outlay for the museum, and it will run through us. And so this just lets Jane, as she always is, be in charge of it.
Right.
Everybody good?
The Act 461, I'm just, this is pertaining to just the funding of.
For the museum, correct.
Has anything changed in regards to the museum and, you know, what was asked and looked at before, as opposed to what we getting and paying for now?
No. In other words, we have two pots of money for the museum. We have capital outlay, and then we have this act money. The act money really went straight to the museum and didn't have a match. But we will administer it, because that's just how it works. It has to go through, through us. But they already had a list, and they made a request, and they got what they asked for.
What they asked for.
The capital outlay, we have a set of plans. It will go out for bid. We handle the whole thing. They might not get, you know, you're going to have deduct alternates, because if there's not enough money, the reason that we have this phase is because in the last phase, things had to be cut, because the bids came in higher. So some of the things that were alternates in the last bid, now will be taken care of in this. But you can't ever guarantee and say, hey, the whole list is going to get done. When you get the pricing, you do as much as you can do, and you prioritize your plans and specifications, so that the things that are alternates, you can live without. And if you're always smart, you do deduct alternates, because if the project goes out of the money, we have no extra money. So you always try to do the basics and get that in, and then you have things you can deduct that you could do without.
Right. Get the basics first.
Yeah, but that's kind of hot, you know, the rundown. Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. 5G.
Resolution number 25131, a resolution accepting Act 461 of the 2025 RLS appropriation relative to the Bayou Tesh Museum and designating Jane Bro to act on behalf of the City of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to this project, and further authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Moved.
Councilman David Merrill and Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas. Any questions or comments?
Will Jane keep us updated on everything while we're moving forward with this?
Yeah, she does. She'll come, and, you know, you'll see, you know, because we have all the applications I got to sign. We have every month, we have, but we can, you know, give you updates along the way.
Yeah, we'd love to do that.
Sure, sure. Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. 5H.
Resolution number 25132, a resolution awarding contracts for road materials and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Moved. Second.
Councilman Troy Como and Councilman Warren White. This is just more of our materials, bids. Everybody good? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Resolution number 25133, a resolution awarding contract for sanitary sewer materials and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Moved. Second.
Uh, I don't know, who?
Take a second.
Okay. Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Ron Davis. Any discussion on this one?
Just finalizing our equipment.
Yep. And please vote your machines. Thank you. 5G.
Resolution number 25134, a resolution rejecting bids received for high calcium pipeline.
I need a motion.
Moved.
Uh, Councilman Troy Como? I'm looking for a second.
Second. I'm giving y'all a chance. Jesus Christ.
Councilman Ron Davis.
All right.
I don't want to beat on this.
Here, any discussion on this item? Everybody good? Please vote your machines.
You got them good time, Mr. Gonsalas.
All right.
Might be something wrong.
Item 6A.
About that list drops to present monthly budget to actual report for November 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm putting everything, it's kind of a boring report, sorry about that. But all of the departments are doing a really great job in monitoring the budget. Rewinding things down. This is 11th month of the year, so October's the end of our fiscal year. Property taxes, occupational licenses, they exceeded what we've budgeted. Um, property taxes, occupational licenses, they exceeded what we've budgeted, sales taxes are, um, expected to meet budget. Does anyone have any questions?
You expect sales taxes to meet, to meet budget?
To meet budget, yes.
Okay.
They're leveling off.
All right. No red flags. I didn't see them.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, uh, like I said, this is, uh, eleven month, and it's over that ninety-two percent. So, we're at the last month into this fiscal year's budget. I was looking at a couple items, uh, police and fire public safety. Uh, and under the expenditures, uh, is at forty, uh, fi- uh, point four-three percent. Okay, so.
What the expenditures for that is, the police and fire public safety fund is a tax fund, the money comes in. And then at the end of the year, which you'll see in October, I'll make an operating transfer. Um, it's just a paper entry to cover the expenditures in the police and fire department. I usually wait to the end of the month to make that. The end of the year, to make the operating transfers.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, a- and then again, at, at the bottom there, the garbage funds, uh, and section eight, I see is at ninety-three percent for garbage funds and, uh, ninety-six percent, almost ninety-seven, for the section eight vouchers. Uh, I was supposed to go back and look at our budget to see, because, I mean, this is maxed out pretty much already, uh.
Right, well, se- section eight is pretty much, it's, it's funded through, uh, the federal Department of, uh, Housing. So, it, it, we did anticipate, um, a little bit more money coming in. I believe that's in our budget amendment that we did, we adopted at the previous meeting. It'll be showing in October, because the, the budget was approved at the other meeting in October.
But she also has a big reserve.
Yes.
She's done a great job in running that department, and we have a reserve that is really bigger than ever. So, that's a good thing. I wish I could say the same thing about your other question. I came about the garbage. We are gonna be where our garbage, it, it's, it's inevitable that our garbage will cost more than the tax brings in.
That, that, that's why I'm asking the question.
I mean, we, we know that.
Into our upcoming budget.
We might not have to make one this year, but at some point, we will have to make one, you know, definitely.
We are, we are funding garbage a little bit. We do have operating transfers budgeted. Um, and that I do also make at the end of the fiscal year, only for what we absolutely need to, to balance the garbage fund out.
Other thing I had is, last time we talked about these contractors or whatever we was using, you had some, some issues that you was wanting to talk about to try to see about with, um, if they was following the, you know, the guidelines or whatever they were supposed to be doing.
That was those, those bid, um, awards I just did for the road materials and sanitary sewer. We did review that and get our questions answered. Um, that's why we presented that, um, on the previous motion to approve those awards.
All right, so we good on that? I just want to make sure, 'cause I remember I follow, I wanted to follow up on that.
Yes, the one for the quicklime, um, neither, neither one, um, met our specifications. We have to have certain size, um, quicklime for it to, um, work with the equipment we have.
Okay, two worked out and one got rejected.
All right, thank you very much, that's what I need to know.
Any else?
The demo fund, we, we got more money than in the demo fund, should let me show it, right? I know we had a couple grants, I guess they're not listed, right?
This is just a small demolition within.
Okay, that's what it is, all right.
The city's demolition, it's not the grant.
Okay, got you.
Everybody good? Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, seven A.
Discussion related to excess tires in the City of New Iberia.
I'm calling Councilman Ron Davis, he's bringing up a, a good issue. Not, not a good issue, but something we need to, something we need to fix.
Yeah, definitely, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I asked Mayor to put this on the agenda, uh, because it seemed to be a a more arising problem throughout the city, um, and, uh, looking to find answers, uh, and get input on how we should, uh, attack this, this program. Uh, been having a rash of tires in a lot of different areas, uh, and a, and a large abundance of tires at that. It's not just one or two tires, um, we find them in on lots, uh, unexpectedly, sometimes forty, fifty tires. You know, and we having to, um, burden ourselves with the removal of these tires. We have already an ordinance for, uh, what is it, four or five tires per resident to be removed, uh, annually.
Through our contract with Pelicans, it's five tires a year per residence.
Right, right, and, uh, you know, uh, five tires is, I mean, it's no way that it's gonna multiply on a one lot.
And that's only in front of houses.
In front of houses.
Remember, because our whole contract is per house count, so it has nothing to do with empty lots.
So we finding these tires on empty lots, uh, you know, where we get nothing for it, uh, and we having the baddest burden. Uh, plus the trashes of the, uh, the area, uh, and the blighted properties that we have to upkeep. Uh, it, it brings about a lot of different things, uh, mosquito, uh, uh, germs, uh, you name it. So, uh, we, we, we're just asking to come up with ideas and ask the mayor to take this on, uh, so that we can come up with a plan. Um, comprehensive plan, uh, and penalties imposed, uh, the whole nine yards, 'cause it just has to stop.
Yes, sir.
Because, I mean, we, we've taken upon ourselves to, uh, take the burden of paying for these pickups and different things along that line and some other places may not have it, and we don't need to take on those burdens, so, Mayor.
Good, thank you, well said. What, what I'm hoping to accomplish is to do a new ordinance, one we don't have. One that addresses tire dumping and puts a hell of a fine on it, so that our law enforcement officers have some teeth and have something to go after. Uh, we can use our new crime camera system, LPR readers, those kind of things. We can make a conscious effort. This is the beginning of raising that awareness. So, that's one part of it. The second part of it, and, and we can break this down as little as we want. Uh, what, what I found, we made mistakes in the past, and we tried to pile on four and five different things. And then one conversation about one form of blight led to us trying to make one ordinance that did ten different things. I'd rather some simple concise ordinances that attack one issue at a time, that have a clear fine, that city court knows how to prosecute it. The judge knows how to rule on it, the PD knows what they're doing, knock it off the list. I don't care if we make ten new ordinances, I'd rather do some simple things that give us, you know, some teeth. So the second thing, and if we wanna do them separate, we can, um, we have a lot of complaints about the many, many tire shops that are popping up in every empty building.
Yep.
Other communities have ordinances that you can't leave all those tires out. Uh, one of the tire shops that we thought was gonna be a problem, and we all got calls about, people freaked out when the tire shop, uh, McDonald's on the corner of, uh, Lewis and Main, when it popped up. They roll up every tire every night and put them back in the building. There is no junk tires outside. There's no, they put their tires in a shipping container, and they have a regular contract, and I see the company come and pick them up. Uh, you know, to dispose of them properly through the state, so kudos to them. They run a really clean shop.
Never have no complaints about that.
We can't say that, we're not gonna point out anybody, but we can't say that all over town, and we're getting more and more shops. So the two things to me, if they're not stacking them outside, nobody's going to take them for whatever reason. Nobody's gonna, they're not gonna, uh, sit there and, and cause a potential fire hazard or a health hazard, and we clean up our town. So to me, the two most pressing issues as I see it, but that's why we're here, is the tire dumping, to stop that with a fine. And then next, to pass an ordinance that all tire shops have to meet a certain criteria.
Correct.
Which means get all those tires out of the, out of the neighborhoods. Um, so that's the two things I'm hoping to get out of the deal, but you add and subtract whatever you want. What I wanna do as a, as a process is get input from everybody, and then my clerk and myself and people that are affected and from, you know, my various departments, we'll write up something. And then we send it to the city attorney, and then he blesses it, and then it comes back, and we make whatever amendments we want. But I think that's the fastest way. What would prove to me when we did the grass in the drains and the flooding, uh, causing damage with a wake. Well, we did those that were stiff fines and that were, you know, we work quickly, we work well together as a group. And then if you're gonna get a stake, you gotta get bloody, and the place to get bloody is right here. The, the full transparency, our, our all the people we represent, our citizens, need to see us working, and what better way than to do it right here? So, I think what you brought is great. I think it's the start of a new way to approach problems. So I'm opening up the floor and, you know, give me your thoughts. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Book Mark I.
So, the fine that we are looking to potentially impose on dumping of tires. Do you go per tire, or if you dump one tire or fifty tires, it's the same fine?
Per tire.
Per tire?
I don't know, I mean, I'm saying that.
Because we don't want them, we don't want them even just throwing out one tire.
Right, right, I mean, is one tire too much? You're gonna pop, I don't know what the fine would be, but.
Right, right.
To me, oh, the, the chief is here, chief.
Oh, that's right.
Boy, they won't do it again, sir. Yes, sir. I'm being backed down, I can tell.
Is this a fine on the dumper or a fine on the landowner?
I want to get the dumper.
The dumper.
Yeah, because.
Dumper.
Yeah, 'cause it can't be on the landowner, because if.
He could be the victim. I, I don't wanna find, I don't know if I wanna find the victim.
Okay, 'cause our junk stuff is on the landowner.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So if it's on the dumper, you gotta find the dumper.
Correct.
That's the tough part.
They can throw it on your property, and you don't.
It is, but I'm trying to make it a worthwhile incentive for, you know, uh, the people in the neighborhood to realize if I turn them in once, they're not coming back. For, I'm not saying that the PD is not motivated, but I mean, I think if we make an effort that here is something new, it's an ordinance and from the city council and myself, we want some attention to this, I think we'll get it. Okay, you had the floor.
I'm just surprised that we needed ordinance for this, actually, because I thought dumping tires is litter, so I thought that we'd be able to utilize those.
We need something stiffer.
Okay.
In other words, if you're gonna go after something, and this is a big pro, and it is a big problem, I mean, I am not exaggerating. We spend tens of thousands of dollars getting rid of tires every year. I think it's a big enough problem to, to have its own, its own thing.
You're right.
Its own ordinance.
Okay, I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of the problem, and I tried that back in the day on the council, and it never went through with the state, but, you know, a tire repair shop collects the DEQ fee per tire, and then if they don't dispose of the tires, and these mom and pop shop, they'll dump it in my field and keep the DEQ fee with no penalties. And you never can trace them, never can track them. So I find piles of tires in my field, it comes from tire shops, but I can't find who did them, you know? So I, I tried to connect the driver's license to a serial number of the tire when you buy a tire, that never flew, but you're gonna have to connect the dots somewhere to catch the people, catch the criminals. 'Cause all these mom and pop, mom and pop shops, I'm telling you, I've seen them on ours, they collecting the DEQ fee, loading their truck at night, and they dumping them in the sugar cane field. Except with that, I mean, fighting Lou Dry, my field, I mean, I'm, I'm all the time, so it's gonna be a difficult challenge. We do need a stiffer penalties. But I think that we need to send a really strong letter to all the tire companies in our city, say we watching, and we paying attention. And we need to, you know, we wanna know what's happening with the, uh, the, the bad tires.
Okay. Put it there.
Of course.
Oh, you can go.
I think all them tire companies such a care, them tires still leaving them out and opening at night. 'Cause, you know, they, people go there and take them, and then some kids take them and roll them, and take them like it's a toy or something, and.
So, this, I don't wanna cut, but what's, what's happening, Warren, is that, you know, he's, I'll go buy four tires, all right, and they price me in five hundred dollars. And then it's a two hundred dollar DEQ fee, well, I don't wanna pay the fee, so the dealer says, here, you take your tires with you, you don't have to pay the DEQ fee. And guess where the tires end up?
In your field, or in my, or in our districts.
That's the problem.
Wherever.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, um, I think.
Troy was next.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I agree, I think it should be the person who's actually dumping them. 'Cause I know in, uh, Mr. Davis's district, uh, I own a piece of property, and along the railroad track there's a dozen or more along the railroad track, and it's right across the street from some houses. And, uh, it's horrible to, to look at. I pass there quite often. So, the other, uh, idea that I had was, uh, some type of paper trail. I don't know if, if we have the authority or if, if it's lawful for us to, uh, require, uh, reports, if you will, about the the, the disposal process, uh, from, from the vendors that are inside the city limits. If they have some type of, um, documentation that they follow with DEQ, if we could be uh, I don't have the answer, but I'm just, it's just a thought, yeah, how many tires in?
How many DEQ fees you collect?
Right.
How many you return to DEQ?
And, and is, is, what is the disposable, disposal process? Do you have, are they required to keep records of that?
I think they are. I mean, they're, is it regulated by the state?
Yeah, and I don't know who has the records.
I don't know.
Yeah, that would, to me, that would be a good conversation to continue.
Okay.
Just the process in which, like Mr. Gonsal, I said, they, they're maybe, they may be collecting a fee for two hundred tires, and they the factory that they, they, that's coming to pick it up to, to dispose of them is only picking up twenty. What happened to the other hundred and eighty tires?
And it's not, it's not the reputable dealers, it's the, it's the, the mom and pop dealers that are, that are, you know, collecting these fees, 'cause they're all required to do the same thing. But you, you're big, you're big firms, or, you know, they have a paper trail, but there's the little mom and pop ones that are popping up all over the city, doing that.
Okay. Good, good, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well, 'cause, well, I work at the dealership, but we change tires on people's vehicles all the time, they buy tires. We have a, uh, a, a, a way that we do it. We dispose them not in the city, there's, there's a pickup that comes to pick them up. And that charge is exactly what Rick said, it's charged to them, but it's not disposed like that, like they do at other places. But I think, um, we should look at dealing with the tire companies that's coming in and making them go it on, and take sure that when they close their tires are put back in where they're not out there like that. That's, that's something that I think will be a big thing, too. But, um, the cameras will make a big difference as us doing that, too, because I'm gonna be honest with you. I've had people before, even when I was on the council the first time, people passing your neighborhood at, at one, two o'clock in the morning, you in the, in the house. And they throw them in your yard, you know, and you don't know who did it. So, we got these cameras now, so those cameras will help play into possibly maybe catching a few people that's doing stuff like that, you know?
I'm gonna go to Jeff and then back to you.
Okay.
Well, I know other places have the same problem with dealers, so we can see what they do. I think Lafayette may have some ordinance.
Yeah.
That requires they be put away, so we'll see about that.
Good, good.
Mayor, uh, the, uh, tire places, they're permitted annually?
Everybody has an occupational license, and that's annually.
Okay, uh, couldn't we put a requirement, uh, in that permit that would require them to keep a, a log of the tires that they
I don't know.
And, and also.
A lot of requirements for the.
That should be part of it already.
No, I'm not sure that, that, that's what the occupational li, the occupational licenses, I understand, is just a license to operate in the city. I don't think we've ever put requirements in occupational.
No, that's just.
No, but they should have that.
Yeah, that's just a tax.
Should be something that they should be having.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know if the, I, 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 I hear what you're saying.
As part of the permit, what I'm saying.
Right, well, they don't have a, all they have is an occupational license.
Yeah, that's not.
We don't have any kind of permit.
Okay.
Whereas every business has an occupational license, which is a tax.
Right.
Okay, so, that has no requirements. Like, there's no other permit from us besides an occupational license.
So the state, the state regulates used tires through DEQ.
Yeah.
The, a tire dealer supposedly has to go and get a DEQ permit to operate a tire shop for disposal reasons. And they monitor it. Now you could request a report from DEQ for each tire dealership within your municipality to see if the in and outs match. That could be a possibility. I don't know if you're overstepping lines or what, but.
I was looking at something, uh, whereas they would be required, uh, to say how many tires that they're put out to for disposal.
Right.
Okay, whether they dispose of it themselves or they have someone to do it. And on the other end, where at the disposal place that they did receive them. So therefore, we know that these tires went to this location a, and not outside of that. You know, more of a tracking system, you know, that they had certain number of tires that left, certain number of tires on the other end was received. Okay, so the other tires that we get, I mean, at least we know that it's not coming in-house within the city that we regulate.
I don't, I, I don't know if we can.
I'm not sure we're worried about the ones that left.
Well, that's true, too. They left, I'm not worried about them, but, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, I just don't know if, if that's I mean, I'm not saying no, let me think about it. I don't know if that's a city thing to regulate. I'm not sure how deep. I wanna catch the criminals, but I'm not, I'm not into running somebody's business.
Chip tires.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, we need to find, we need to find out how DEQ regulates.
What we're gonna do.
'Cause they're getting paid off of those tires.
Well, but they may be in and out reg, you know. Maybe, maybe. We're gonna, uh.
Data, I don't know.
We'll, we'll start looking at what other cities do and how they try to regulate it, and I'll try to figure out with some help how DEQ regulates.
See, I'm looking at something here from LDEQ, and it says, manifest means the mechanism provided for Louisiana Department of Quality and other governing authorities used in identifying the quantity, type, origin, transportation, and destination of waste tires. And the tire material from the point of generation, authorization, and destination, you know, whereas.
Yeah, that's when they're getting rid of them. That's when they're getting rid of them. I don't know that they monitoring how many the tire shop bought.
Or they have to get rid of them somewhere.
No, no, I know, but they should also have a big old warehouse full of tires. I, you know, whereas I don't think they reg, I don't think DEQ even asks how many tires you have at your shop versus how many you get rid of.
Yeah, 'cause just like Ricky said, they throw it on his property.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know?
But we'll, we'll, I, we'll figure out what other people do, and, and, and I think we can get there. Yes, sir.
Hey, now, now don't pass out. Based on, based on what I'm hearing, if, if we, it, it was a joke, but, uh, if we wanna be proactive and, and, and say what's the number we u, we spend on used tires a year? You said ten thousand?
No, way more than that, way more than that. No, there's some times that we get stuck. We had some dumpsters out for a community project, and just that project alone cost me seven or eight thousand dollars to get rid of the tires people threw in there.
What if we take the proactive approach and, and we wanna clean our city, and we do a tire collection day, up to a certain amount? And just have people, residents, come on the drive lights and drop off tires at Public Works or wherever, a, and that way, maybe we clean up some of the tires in our community. Not tire dealers.
It's not a bad idea. In other words, the parish, when I was the pro tem.
They do chemicals.
A few times, we did household hazardous waste. We took tires, we took computers, we could TV, I was over there, you know, it was fun, but we used to do that at Public Works. We haven't had done that, so it's not out of the realm.
You said you wanna single things out.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe we do a tire day. I, I'm cool with that. I mean, we ended up with, uh, law enforcement, we ended up with Public Works, we ended up with Fire Department. People came out and volunteered, we did it on a Saturday. I kinda like that.
I mean, gotta be a city driver.
You know, we're gonna spend a little money to do it.
Spend it anyway.
We're gonna spend it anyway.
Well, we'll be knowing.
I'd rather them bring them to me, because it's not only the expense of the top per tire, it's my crews going out, it's the equipment, it's the fuel cost. It's the disruption that we were supposed to be pouring concrete or cleaning drains, except we out on East Egg hunt. It, uh.
And this is what I'm thinking, so, this is what I'm thinking, so Troy's saying, you know, they got ten tires on the side of railroad track. Well, if an individual wants to clean up the city and be proactive, he goes pick up them ten tires, brings his drive lights, and he drops them off at the collection day. Maybe we can.
I like it.
I think it's a good idea.
I like it.
Yeah, I think so, too.
And y'all can all volunteer.
Oh, sure. At least we know where the tire's going.
No, it's, it's, it's.
We know where they gotta go.
Well, you know what we do, we pass the ordinance, then we do the PR, and we use Facebook to our advantage, 'cause we're doing something good. And we hold this tire event. I kinda like it. And then somewhere in the middle, we amend the budget to pay for it, but.
You know, but every tire we collect is one tire we ain't gotta deal with.
It's one less we gotta chase.
Paying foot anyway, so.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I would just ask, and I know there's a, there's a company that picks up tires and recycles them, so, yes. So, I don't know if we've ever entertained, uh, just getting the information from them, what, what a contract.
With them, that's who comes get our tires, that's what we do with our tires after we collect them all over town, we put them. We put them in Public Works and Colt comes to pick them up. So, I mean, we have a relationship with them.
Okay, so I guess it would just, just to get more information about how we can, if we, I know that the, outside the city limits has a contract with them. They, they pick them up as well, so if, if we could get people to drop them off at a location rather than drop them off on, on the, along the railroad track or in the cane field.
Show them, store them, and then we, uh, call them up and we're full.
So just have Colt drop a trail and pick it up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
In regards to what, uh, Mr. Como is saying about dropping them off, and Ricky, I think saying the same thing. The drop offs, are there gonna be any, uh, requirements like, uh, address to drop them off?
Yeah, it'd have to be a city resident, cause I don't wanna get overrun and use city dollars to pay for, you know, people. I'm not, I've got nothing against anybody from some of the community, but I feel like if we're gonna do this and spend city funds, it, it, they need to bring. That's how we did the hazardous days. You had to have a, you know, a license with an address in the city.
So, so Ron, so what we do at the co-op in Generec, we have like a hundred farmers that own the co-op, but we get a certified farmer's license. Everybody's required to get a certified farmer's license from the Department of Ag, Mike Strange's office. And we have an ag tire collection day. Farmers got their license, they bring ag tires to the location, Colt picks them up and we dispose of them. And obviously, it's, it's a per charge per tire that we get charged. It's nothing free, but we getting them off the property, we getting it cleaned up. It's proactive approach to cleaning up the area. And I'm thinking similar to this, however we modeled it, we could make a dent and clean our city up.
Yeah, no.
It's not what, I don't wanna spend the money, but we're gonna spend it anyway.
A little bit of help at this time. I mean, we're just picking away at it, uh, to try to get where we need to be. But it is, uh, uh, an issue and some of it's being brought in on private properties that we have to go and clean up and cut around and so on and so forth. Now, I know we don't go in on these properties and some of the people, as they cut, they don't remove those tires, so they stay there, you know? So, uh, it's, uh, you know, it, it's, it, it could be add-ons as we go. But it's to see what in our charter right now, you know? And I think in our charter, it does somewhat address the tires. And that's something we need to look at, anyway.
In our ordinances, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and ordinance. Uh, and Mayor, I, I guess as you go through the thought process, uh, you'll come back with us.
Oh, certainly. That's the point of this. In other words, uh, what we'll do is we'll review the meeting, we'll have all the notes, we'll get everybody's comments, and then we'll start trying to put something together. You give me a little while and then maybe not the next meeting, but maybe the following meeting, we'll bring it back and we'll keep going till everybody likes it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do we know it's not the mom and pop tire companies dropping off for the tire drop off?
We have to figure it out.
You copy the licenses, I guess?
Exactly.
You copy the licenses, you know, when they bring them in? And you keep track of who's bringing them in?
They come with fifty, we don't know.
Yeah, problem.
Yeah.
I mean, are we gonna have a limit? Cause what if someone like really wants to clean up and say, I'm gonna pack my truck five times and come here?
Send them over to be interviewed, but with the chief.
We can always put like a maximum collection if, if, if the mayor says maybe, I don't know, a thousand tires, that's all we can take. First, first come, first served, or whatever. You know, we can, but we, we're gonna have to, I'm after the residents bringing tires that, that's on their property, not companies.
Right, right. And again, if we don't know.
The company's already paid, you know, they, they got paid from DEQ.
That's what I was concerned about. They would get paid and then say, oh, well, this is my little cousin. You go and bring it. They won't know who you are.
Well, some of that might happen, but I don't think.
That would be a good idea though.
You just gave them a really good idea.
If we, if we do move forward.
I feel like if people are gonna be dishonest, they're gonna be dishonest.
They're gonna find a way to be dishonest. That's why they're dishonest. I agree. It's still, it's still off our streets and it's out of that stream of landing somewhere we don't want it.
That's what I'm thinking.
You know, I, I didn't say we're gonna do this continuously, you know? We're gonna pass an ordinance, we're gonna work to find the criminals, and then we're gonna do a tire pickup and see how it goes. We, you know, I'm not saying that this is something we're gonna be able to sustain, but it, it's, it's a great gesture and it's a start, you know?
Okay.
And hopefully we do that and we catch a few people and people calm down about dumping tires.
Think, you know.
Worth a shot. Yes, sir.
No, I was just gonna say, that's a good idea though. If we do have the, the, uh, day where people are turning them in, we could have a list of the tire shops and the owners on hand. And if they, if they show up with a truckload of.
Okay, yeah.
I think you do a little PR, you put our, our camera up with a tire and, you know, fine, and, and you put it out there and say, you will get caught with a camera and this is, you'll be fine. It'll catch their attention.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, thank you. Good discussion. I appreciate the effort and, uh, I'll get back to everybody and, and the, we'll flesh it out. All right, councilman's remarks, uh, I'll start with Ron Davis tonight. Since Dan's not here.
We, uh, thank y'all for y'all discussions on the, uh, tire issue. And, uh, that's just one among any, uh, many problems that we may have to deal with. So, uh, just, you know, I put your thanking caps on, uh, and, uh, as we go back and revisit this. And, uh, Mayor, I, I appreciate whatever help you give on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm planning on doing a, a neighborhood watch meeting on the twentieth of next month. I've already talked to Jane. She's gonna be able to be coming out. Maybe one, uh, police chief can have one of these guys come out also. And this is gonna be kinda like a preparing ourselves for Thanksgiving type thing, so I'm gonna start calling some of the people that I have on my list early, maybe bring a little something and just not make it just a meeting, but just a little get together thing too, before everybody go enjoy Thanksgiving with their families. That's it.
I'm good for tonight, Mr. Como.
Do we have any new information from the grant writer that's, seems to be holding up the demolition?
The issue with the property that you are working, um, they need a sam.gov login. And with the government shutdown, they can't get one right now, so that's.
Washington, welcome Washington's in our area.
Oh, yeah.
Must say, I'm cringing when I see my neighbors walking through the neighborhood, cause they, they haven't taken up arms yet, but.
I understand.
They are rightfully at their wits' end.
I, I, I agree.
And I'm about to join them. I think I've already joined, uh, but, uh, yeah, so please let us know.
Yep, just.
We will.
Thank you, Lainey.
Question, Lainey, are we complete and where we stand at with streetlights? Are we, how many have turned in or give me a little report on that if you don't mind?
I'm gonna do that in my.
Oh, okay.
In my room. Read my mind, read my mind.
I didn't know you had it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, they have a health fair at San Francisco's diner from ten to one tomorrow. And also on October thirty first, uh, Ruin the Berry, you know, Halloween night for the kids, uh, from five to seven at Weston Park and try to make a safe, you know, place for them to come and have fun, so that they go knock on people's doors. So we asking all the kids and the parents to bring the kids and have fun. Have a game truck, fun jump, and a lot of activities on that night.
Thank you.
Okay, I am having our annual neighborhood free garage event November second, uh, from eight AM to noon. I could use some student volunteers. Uh, a lot of students that are in different clubs need hours, service hours. So if you have a student that needs some hours, just reach out to me. My number's five seven eight eight five zero eight. Also, if any of y'all know anyone in need, this is a free garage event for people who need things. Uh, maybe they had a house fire or they're displaced because of whatever reason, uh, reach out to me and I'll give y'all my address so they can come and, and get stuff that they want free of charge. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna start with the streetlights, okay? So what I've got, and I'm still analyzing it, but I have four sheets, okay? And they're all color coded. I'll show you that for a second and then we'll talk about it, okay? There's three blue sheets, okay? But we have a bunch of sheets, okay? So the green are council people, which we have a, a good amount. Everybody's turned in something, a few people more than others, but we have a good amount of lights. The yellow, which is an old list that we just kept everybody who called for a street light, because for many years we haven't added any street lights. So the yellow is our constituents. And then the blue, which is part of this page, all of this page, all of this page, and this page is former councilman Chudoo Lewis. Okay, so he alone has turned in sixty. So he's working. Um, so I have more than enough locations than we can afford, all right? So now comes the hard part. We are going to finish identifying these, look for doubles, put them on a GIS map, okay? Cause I think that's important. And I have some help to do that. And the next thing we're gonna do is I'm gonna sit down with the chief and ask the chief to get with his four lieutenants, because the four lieutenants run the shifts. I know only two of them are at night, but still sometimes they alternate, they do different things. So because there's more than we can ever afford, I would like, the point of a street light is public safety. So I would like their input, just because there're gonna be some that they're gonna say, we definitely need that for a camera, or we definitely, we've had incidents there, we've had a crime problem there, or we've had some, you know, other kind of violence. You know, we really need a street light here. That will help me at least begin to weed them down. Because the million dollar question is, you know, what do we pick? Well, it's ver- it's based on public safety. So I'm starting with us as a council and, and I'll color code my map. And then we'll probably come back another time before I hit the go button. But what I wanna have it is all mapped out, something that makes sense. There could be some doubles, uh, and something that, there could be some that we just say, we know we can't do them all. So we need to base this decision on the best public safety decision that we can make, cause I know I can't afford to do all of them. Uh, but that's where I'm at. So thank you all for turning them in. Uh, Amber did a really good job of, of keeping track of the ones the citizens brought. And then, like I said, uh, we, we got a huge list, so I'm gonna go through it. And then once we bring it back, I'll do like I do everything of get your input on it. Yes, sir.
I know I've spoken already, but in regards to the, the street light, uh, I, I, I did my patrol at night. And I found a lot of lights that was not working.
Yes.
And of, of course I flagged them and hopefully we can get that part taken care of first.
Klico has stepped up some of repairing lights. We're actually getting calls from people that are thanking us that, you know, some action is happening. We will keep the pressure because there, there has to be. Um, I think that this is great, but if I have, if I put this many new lights and have that many lights not working, we didn't accomplish anything, okay? And my bill, our bill, okay, is already almost six hundred thousand dollars. Well, we know the bill's gonna go up, so we need to get every bang we can for our buck of the money we're spending. So Klico has, uh, I've requested another patrol from them. Our police department has turned in, and that's not on this list. That police department has turned in tons of lights that are not working and have made night patrols. And that's what I'm, I'm jamming on Klico, you know, to keep working at fixing.
I know I caught.
But the combination of both things, I think are gonna make a difference.
Well, that along with some of the tree trimming.
Yeah, that's, that's another part of the issue is the tree trimming. Agreed.
It, it brings about a lot of dark spots, uh, as, as we're looking around. You think it's not a light there, because it's caught up in the trees, so.
No, I agree.
That would help.
So anyway, that's an update on the lights. It's not perfect, but I finally have a list that we can work off of and begin to do the mapping and get some input.
Good move.
Well, thank you. Um, okay, next I'm gonna go to a little quick update on the festival building. We have the initial paperwork from the parish's attorney. That's been handed over to the city attorney.
We're meeting on Thursday.
And there you go. They're meeting on Thursday. So it's a long process. I don't want anybody, it's like when we pass a road tax or a millage that we rededicate and then four months later, people are mad because we're not doing roads. I mean, it is a process. We have a half a million dollars that wants is transferred. I don't think it'll be trans- I, I, as soon as I, in my mind, it's probably the end of the year. It has to come to y'all with the parish council has to do steps two. We have a, a cooperative endeavor agreement or, you know, a transfer. We have a lot of things to do. Once it is in place, then I can access the half a million dollars. The half a million dollars would do the architecture. We'll assess the building, because I can go on for days. I mean, that's what I do for a living. You know, both the air conditions are shot, that's over six hundred thousand dollars. The, uh, balcony rails don't meet code because a kid could fall through it. There's no sound attenuation to the alarm system, that's a code violation. We have, uh, tons of other issues. We have, uh, mold in the basement, uh, the basement needs to be utilized, that's gonna have to be air conditioned. Just many, many issues. A huge issue, it's a nineteen fifty building. The apparatus that works the stage curtain between the steel of the apparatus and the curtains themselves, it's thousands of pounds. If that gave away from nineteen fifty, we would have a real issue. So it's great that we receive this. In the long run, it's well worth it, okay? Uh, we see the big vacuum that is causing our community for our dance teams having to go as far as Morgan City, having to go to Lafayette, no matigra balls, no other events that happen there, no rain venue for things like just happened beneath the balconies, those kind of things. So it has its place, but it is not gonna be a fast process. Once the plans are finished, then we, the next step is that we have a million dollar match in our budget, which y'all have approved, that we have built up over three, three years. We can't spend that million dollars till we get to three and a half million, three point one, I think, that's coming from the state, because that's our match. So when we have the four million, we ready to roll. We bid the job, we're good, we gonna pull this off. But people need to understand that it is a process. This is the first step of the process. When we get a little further along and the building's transferred, I'm gonna come back to y'all. I have some ideas and some things that I'd like to put together and I need all your help on. Uh, we're gonna do a little community event with this and get a whole lot of people informed on what's going on. Cause not everybody watches these meetings and this is not enough information for people to totally understand what's coming. But it's progress. I'm not knocking it. So the first step has begun of a, of a long process. So I wanted to give you an update on that. Next thing I wanna talk about is the dog shelter. Yes, sir.
And the building comes with property.
It does come with property and you're correct. It comes with the existing skate park, which will be dismantled soon when the new skate park is open. It comes with half of the baseball field behind the armory, cause the armory got the other half. It comes with the teardrop. All of that property will be utilized for additional parking, cause one of the other problems of the building is when you utilize it now, you've got double parking on Park View, you've got people, families crossing the street. It is not an ideal situation. So this will give us enough parking so that when you have an event, we're, we're not all over Park View, uh, which is another big expense, but it is something that has to happen. So that property comes along with it. Thank you.
Yeah, and the parish owns that now. We've been leasing it for years.
Yes, yes. So that's that. The next thing, I wanna bring you up to date a little more on the dog shelter. So we got public records request information and we just got it in, so we are still in the process of digesting it. If you go through it, we're about forty-two percent of the dogs in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. People would flood out there that were fifty percent. We're about forty percent, forty-two percent. I asked for euthanizations. I only have two years. In two years, they basically euthanized three hundred dogs. Looking at other items, we're working through the budget and getting an understanding of what's going on. Now, the parish president called, so we are setting a meeting up for next week. So we're gonna go next week and have a meeting. So what I wanna do tonight is give you some scenarios. The backup plan could be that we build the shelter. The other plan is that we work something out. So I'm not going into a meeting blind and I negotiate very differently from most people. I tell you where I'm at, I tell you where I think we should head. I want some input. I don't do anything without y'all. It's not fair to go in there half a team. So I'm gonna give you a few little points and if you want, give me some feedback. If you don't wanna give me feedback, I'll go to the meeting and do what I gotta do. One of the things I'm concerned about is that if we enter into another contract, we've had two contracts and they've both been for two years and the parish has quit on us twice. So that's a weird deal for me as a guy who runs a business to go and negotiate a third contract. If that's what we do, that's what we do. And it might be all we can afford to do. It, it might, and it is very weird that we would have two separate dog shelters. So I'm going into it with the mindset that my backup plan is to borrow a million and a half dollars, do what I do and build the shelter and then incur overhead costs for that shelter. But I'm gonna go into it as my backup plan. My first plan, I'm gonna go into it, and I'm kinda asking your opinion, is I'm gonna see one more time if we can work something out and see how that goes before I pull off a loan for the city for ten years. We have so many things going that are positive things, drainage and roads and just so many things to do. I do think that it is, uh, a burden to, for me, for the three years I have left as mayor, um, max, for the two years that the parish president has left, to enter into something that the city's gonna pay for for ten years. So I wanted to just say that's gonna be my backup plan. So I'm going in there saying, okay, I'm gonna try to negotiate one more deal. I have a little more wisdom than the first time, a little more wisdom than the second time, so I have to try to come up with a, you know, a different concept. So my first question is, is everybody okay with that?
I think, I think.
Oh, yeah, I guess we gotta run it like a me- I'm sorry, we're running like a meeting.
So I think, you know, just.
So I think, and I'm just breaking it brief, but I think the, in the previous contracts, we kinda had the hands-off approach. I think this contract, we need hands-on approach.
I'm gonna show you real quick.
Make some more comments about that later, but.
Well, that's where I'm heading, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I can appreciate that, uh, as I said before, I, I think it's, it's, right now, it's about the personality that's, that's in office. And, um, it's not the entities. The entities can work together. Uh, and again, the present, uh, administration in the parish has two years left. If you, if we're looking at a, a long-term solution, we have to look past the next two years, so. Uh, I, I think it would be, in my opinion, um, I think we should have one shelter and work, find a way to, 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 uh, make it happen.
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, just looking, listening at it all, I, I think that, uh, the contractual agreement that we may be able to negotiate, uh, I, I see it as temporary. Uh, and that we should look at the possibility of doing our own. Uh, anticipating the growth, we have subdivisions and different things along that line. And at our last meeting, we, we spoke on the, the growth possibilities, and will they be able to meet that need as well? So we may end up back there. Uh, anyway, you know, so, uh, I know it's a big expense. I know that, uh, we have to do a lot of things to be able to meet that need. Uh, getting the information, uh, as we have gotten some, I don't know if it's all.
And just know I can't do it by March.
That's right. Well, well, you see, and that's why I say temporary for sure. Uh, hoping that we can get some leeway, uh, within some type of agreement if it's just for that, uh, amount of time. If it's not for longer, uh, but that's, that's, that's a, a game of numbers, you know, so, uh, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Cause I know we had contracts that went and it, it served itself, but you know, uh, i- it, it could change at any moment.
Okay, yes, sir.
The first contract, was it in twenty twenty-one?
Eighteen, it started.
When you and, and, and the parish president got together, was it?
We are not, I guess I, second or third, I don't remember what year, but I mean, it's been a while back.
Yeah, okay. Um, I agree with your second proposal, like what, what Ron was saying. Um, the meeting could be something that maybe can give us a little leeway for a little bit longer. But, uh, I really think we need to go back to trying to get our own shelter. I'm, I'm just my, my opinion. I was on the council the first time, we had our own shelter. We've grown, you know, a lot since then, money-wise, new developments and putting brand-new houses and all of this stuff in the, in the community. I don't think we should be turning back. That's what I'm saying. And I'm looking at the term limits like what you're talking about as well. If he's out there in the next two years and you're running for the same position he's running for, we still have to be in a position that we can maintain.
Regardless of anybody who fills any spot, we two separate entities, and we gotta figure out a way to work together.
What I'm saying is, I'm talking about the city itself.
Yeah.
You know, that don't mean just because we're gonna, we're gonna work together, I'm saying.
Yeah.
I think we should have our own shelter. We had it a long time ago, you know? And we didn't have the same monies that we have right now either.
We didn't have it when we were in office.
And we didn't have, we didn't have the, the building that we're coming up with right now for our community. We got a lot of stuff going on in this community.
We do, we do.
And I think the shelter is gonna be something.
Okay.
That eventually, whatever it costs us, and that's another thing too, we're gonna talk about as well when you get a chance to, is trying to find out, you're not gonna know every cost involved as far as for the people working there and everything. But we'll be able to know a cost that we can look at to at least go forward with trying to do something, and then add on, just like with some of these projects we have going on. You ain't gonna never know exactly what's all the cost gonna be. And some things are gonna come from what we're doing, and you gotta extend your budget and everything like that. So I'm just looking at it from that perspective that, uh, that's something we should be working on for the next five, ten years to come. I'm looking at the future, I'm not looking at, you know.
None, none of this is a sprint. It's all a marathon. Thank you.
So just hearing the echo in the comments.
We have a lot more stuff to, to go over.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dan, if that's fine.
No, I mean.
But it's good. I mean, you wanna go first?
I don't know, I kinda feel like we're gonna end up, let me hit all my points.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Then we'll go, because I don't wanna have to keep repeating. Yeah, 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 or it might spur, I'm trying to get, I want you to see everything and then we'll have a discussion because you might have another idea. Okay, the first thing is, I had already expressed to the parish president when he called, the night that he called and said, I'm gonna send you a letter that we quit, that the chief and I had already talked about it, because we talked about this when the chief was putting his letter together that he sent, that we needed some help with the pack of dogs. We could furnish our own dog catcher, now that would be our employee. So we could furnish our own dog catcher, pay for that person, and bring the dogs to the parish if that's an option. So that's why I don't wanna try. Now, if we do that, that gives us real input at the shelter, cause we have an employee who's going there. I think that's important. That's what we haven't had in the previous contracts. The other thing we get is they need to give me my cage back, because we let the parish borrow the cage that we had. Cause we have not had a dog catcher or a pound since the PD went away. So it has been much longer than when we, e- even when we served together, it was before that. So that cage has been laying around at Public Works forever, and then a few years ago, I loaned it to the parish. So I need the cage back, okay, so that we would have a truck for our dog catcher, okay? The next thing is, and this is one you don't like to talk about, but it's reality, okay? If you're gonna run a dog shelter, you're gonna have to euthanize some animals. If they're too old, if they're sick, if they can't be adopted, if they're violent, you know, if they're a danger to, to go back to some family or a kid, it, it's inevitable you're gonna have to do that. Well, if I have to deal with the bad side, cause I'm pretty well gonna tell you that what's gonna come is, okay, if we do this together, I do want more input. Well, that means I have to take the good with the bad, and that's the bad, okay? Nobody even wants to think about that. On the flip side, if we're back in the game together, then I wanna be able to make sure that the dogs that are adoptable have the best chance they can. So I would want some input. In other words, you can't go to Tractor Supply and just bring the parish dogs. Whatever dogs you bring to get adopted, wherever you go, you gotta include our pups. They gotta get the equal chance. That's something we've never talked about before. But if we're gonna go into this, then let's go into it open-minded, and let's go into it that we're gonna do the bad and the good. So I think it's important, if I find other agencies that maybe they haven't, okay, or if you do, and we see another way to get some dogs adopted, or we have a nonprofit who wants to help, I've been meeting with quite a few nonprofits. There are a bunch of people out there, I am amazed at how given these people are and how much they will move the mountain for a dog. But I don't know that they're in the game. Again, if I gotta do the bad, I wanna bring the good. So in this contract, I want some flexibility that we can be involved with the dogs that come from the city. Um, I would hope that we would have a two-year contract, because I'm telling you, it's a lot of money and a lot of commitment, and I still don't have a handle on it, so to build one long-term is one thing, but to sacrifice other things we're trying to do in the short run is, is not smart either. Uh, you know, if I started coming back to you and saying, hey, I'm gonna cut this, 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 and this, because we gotta build a dog shelter, we, we working backwards. So the two years to me gave enough time to where we could look long-term, see costs, see whatever. Um, then I won't get out of the contract unless I come to you. I can't tell anybody on the parish side what to do, but I would like them to have to go to their council, cause it's pretty aggravating when you get a call at six o'clock at night that just says, I quit. You know, if they, I wanna know if they, if I get in a contract, I gotta ask you permission. So to get out of it, I gotta ask you permission. I am hoping, and I'd like to clear that up on the other side, that I know that I'm going into a contract and I'm not gonna get a phone call that ruins my weekend that says, hey, guess what, I quit. I just don't think that's the way to go. Um, so let's see, I think I covered most of my stuff. Uh, but that's gonna be my mindset, and y'all need to know that, you know? You're sending me on a mission, I'm going on a mission. Jeff's coming with me, we're gonna see what we can do. Um, but if we make a new contract, it needs to be different from the last two. And again, if we're gonna have skin in the game, then let us have skin in the game for both the good and the bad. And that's a way that I think we can all feel involved, and if you're gonna go back into, I'm not gonna go do the same contract the same way, and then, you know, somebody gets mad and quits again. I, I, I don't wanna do that. I would like it that it's more of a partnership, and to be more of a partnership, I'm stepping up and saying, I gotta take the good and the bad. Which means you gotta take the good and the bad, okay? Which means your phones are gonna ring. But I would just, that's kinda my spiel, so I would like just a little input on kind of the whole mindset of how I'm going, cause y'all love the half the team. And if everybody ran their governments like that, we'd be a lot better off, you know? No, nobody's a king. You, you're not, you're not going over there and doing, you know, your own thing. So any input on kind of my concept?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go around the table. Brooke?
Okay.
House one, more.
Now, of course, you know, at first I did want us to just do our own thing, cause I was very frustrated with how,
Well.
How people just quit, yes. Um, but if you feel like you can go in there and wheel and deal and make something work, and us be able to have more of a say-so in things, um, even just with having an employee involved, I think would be a big difference. Um, I say let's go with that and see what you guys can make work. Hopefully something makes sense, uh, whenever you guys are talking, and we can have a, a better contract this go around. And temporarily, but you know, it's something instead of us trying to spend all this money creating our own shelter.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
If I was gonna have one, I might as well go around the table. Yes, sir.
I feel the same way, you know, see if you can make a deal with them instead of have to go in there and make that ten-year, you know, on the, on us, that money we don't have. So that's where I'm at with that, if.
I would say that the ten-year commitment is the, for the capital outlay improvements, the building, the structure, but the, it's perpetual forever, the maintenance.
Yeah, I think it's ten years to pay the note.
Right. What did you ex- expect or calculate, estimate the maintenance operation of you?
I'm working on that. Now that I got all these numbers, I'm putting that together. I will have it pretty soon, but I don't have a jet.
That's not even accounted for in, in the, in the discussion that we've been having with the one point five million to start the, the facility. I would ask that, and when you go to the meeting, uh, if the parish council has to approve the, to address it, the way we wanna approve, we're gonna work together. In my experience, I could be wrong, but in my experience, I believe the council has, the parish council has to.
Ratification.
To ratify the contract, either to get in or to get out, or from my own experience, I could be wrong.
Okay, thank you.
I would also ask, um, for clarification, if this doesn't work out and, and someone goes to the shelter, uh, and I, maybe Mr. Gonson, I can share some, uh, recent experiences that he's got some calls on. Uh, if, if someone from the city goes and asks to, to, uh, offer this, an, an animal for adoption, uh, because they can't afford it or for whatever reason, uh, are they not gonna accept the do- the animals? What are, what are those, the citizens expected to do with those animals that they wanna give up for adoption? Knowing that city tax dollars go into the rabies control, which a lot of the money that funds the, the parish facility is coming from the rabies control that the city residents pay into. I, I would like to know what their thought process is on how they're gonna handle that, and how they plan on answering the, the city residents, what they're doing with, with our money that we're spending in that tax. Uh, and is, in reference to the facility, the mon- our money is, is not unlimited. So as the mayor, uh, insinuated, maybe something may have to be cut. So I would encourage us as a group to be thinking about what we might wanna cut in services to pay for this new facility. Uh, not the one point five, but maybe the half a million or so, uh, operational cost per year. So I would encourage us to be researching that as well.
Yeah, well, under the parishes, you can look it up, the parish budget, they spend a half a million a year to run the shelter. So a round figure, but.
Yeah, a couple of things. Echoing what Troy said, I had a conversation with an individual that dropped two dogs off the day before yesterday and went to the shelter, and the employee said, we have no room, all sixty kennels are full, we'll call you when availability comes. So he called me and said, what do you want me to do with them? I said, what did they tell you to do with them? He said, bring them home. I said, well, that's not my dog. I said, understand. So doing a little research, and I had to talk to the mayor, I mentioned it to Mr. Como, that, you know, in, in the ordinance for the parish, it says that the parish president has to go out and verify with three animal rescue organizations before they can euthanize a pet. So I found that kinda strange that there was connections between euthanization and keeping the population down in the community of pets with an animal rescue. We all agree they need to be rescued, but I think that if we are attending a new agreement, that we need to readdress that resolution with the parish to make sure that we have control of the population, and we can maintain equitable service to our community. Because if we get into another agreement and the shelter's full again, then we back to square one again. We can't, we can't pick up vicious dogs, any dogs in our community. So I think that's what the people are expecting, is to keep our community clean of vicious animals or stray animals. That's all they asking, and that's simple government service. Getting back to the facilities, I'm just a firm believer that, that animal control can be operated under one roof, uh, city and a parish. I think it's a lot more effective, a lot more efficient, a lot more cost-effective from, it comes from an overall budgeting standpoint and facility maintenance standpoint and employee standpoint. I love the ideas of the mayor of having some input and some connection at the facility. I think that's detrimental, Freddie. I think we have to have a hand in there, some kind of way with input, so we can monitor what's going on, cause you know, it's a lot of, a lot of input and money that we're spending. And, and when you look at the cost of a new facility and, and what we're doing as a city, the projects, I would hate to have to come back in six months and make a decision, well, guys, do y'all really wanna do this improvement to the festival building? Cause we really got this cost on the animal control, we're gonna have to cut some of the input on the festival building versus animal control. I don't wanna make those decisions. I want what's best for my community, I want them both, and I think we can, we can achieve that goal one way or another if we work together. I really do.
Thank you. Well, that's my point of the input, is that's how we control the population on our side. However many kennels we get, cause it's not fun to go over there and say, this animal gotta be put down. But that's the only way, to your point, we're gonna control that we have some kennels.
Unless you got a better one, but I don't think so.
Unless we, and, and hopefully we can get more kennels than we have now. That doesn't mean the price won't go up, but again, I, I just wanna get, and I'm getting good feedback. Yes, sir.
I'm still on board with, uh, reality, like you talked about reality. I live in reality. And the reality is, even if this meeting doesn't work out, I look at moving forward with other goals and options as well, just like you're talking about.
A and B, and maybe C.
You have to be able to be able to look at it from a perspective of what's my options after this. And I also look at the fact that if we have to make some decisions, they, and it has to go that way, we have to prepare ourselves for that. You know, we, we just can't think that it's gonna work out to our benefit in that one meeting. But another thing that you said, and, and what Ricky said is, if by any chance we can make some type of agreement to further this contract or whatever, we have to have some game in the play. And it's a guarantee, if we're not signing the same contract like we did since those last two contracts. So that's my input.
Good, thank you.
Um, the, uh, any contract has a termination point. And that's what we ran into with the other agreements that we had. And, and I'm sure going forward, this is what you wanna be able to maintain and control. But also, uh, whether we partnering with the parish or anyone else, there's a degree of responsibility, okay? We have a, uh, it seem like they've meet, they've met some maximal amount of shelter, just like we had, and that may increase, because it's gonna be an influx and inflow, things that come in. Uh, some things we may not be able to control, but we can possibly anticipate on what's what. Uh, but on the level of responsibility, cause the game does change when you talk about responsibilities as such. And, uh, it may be that, I mean, I'm sure we could work together, but you got to have some skin in the game.
That's why I'm trying to put us some skin in the game.
Skin in the game, be able to do it. So, uh, we need to find out what that is and, and what part we wanna play.
Yes.
And if we not willing to play, then we know what we have to do.
That's exactly right, no.
I mean, and, and that goes both, on both ends, you know?
That was my point tonight, was, you know, one, to come up with a plan that we had some skin in the game, that it was something new and different, and to get your buy-in before I go to that negotiation. You know, cause there are some things that, uh, you know, eh, eh, it's just important, especially on an issue like this, that, that we are, uh, all on the same page and all understand, we're gonna flesh out our options, and I'm gonna go with, you know, the understanding of what each one of you want. I can't make everybody happy all the time, that's not the point. But the point is that together we make better decisions, and just by these discussions, it helps me kinda, uh, formulate a game plan for what, you know, what I'm faced with. Cause I mean, the reason we took this job is for these challenges, you know? When I see somebody in public office and they wonder about their job, I wanna knock them in the head. We, we put money up, put time up, and ask people to give us these jobs. So when you get it, you can't whine about it, you know? But at the same time, it's a challenge, you get frustrated, you know? You can wanna punch the wall, and you can punch the wall when nobody's looking. But the, the point is, you know, uh, we, we want these challenges, and it's just to make the best. But the the point is, you know, uh, we we want these challenges and it's just to make the best decision as a team. So thank y'all, thanks for the input. Only other thing I got, since this was my long discussion, um, Beneath the Balconies was awesome. It was really good, it had a really good turnout, they honored Kathy Endes, uh, I got to kind of bring that up and give a little spiel and and she's, we wouldn't have Beneath the Balconies, we wouldn't have Symphony Sunday. We'd have a museum, but it would be much smaller if not for her contribution and her hard work for many, many years. Uh, it's not often that, you know, she was my teacher when I was fifteen, it's not often that you end up, that you meet somebody that, you know, an inspiration to you for you, basically, your entire life ahead of that. So anyway, that was a neat kind of side aspect of the balconies, but, you know, it's, we had a good sugarcane festival, we had a good gumbo cook-off, we had a really good balconies, all those things are great. And this coming weekend, we have a hollering parade, I'm hoping a lot of kids come out, uh, should be a a good little event. Um, won't be long after that, we'll have the Christmas parade. So it's just a good time of year that once these festivals start, uh, it's 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 just good for the whole community. So hope to see y'all at the parade and with that.
When is that, Mayor?
Uh, Saturday, four o'clock.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh.
Thank you.